...our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'm going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners needing an order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Samasko.
Here.
Commissioner Tamiya.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushi.
Here.
Commissioner Greatham.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here.
Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would like to have the Convention Center Management Agreement with SMJ deleted from tonight's agenda. That's item 12G under new business. And I would like to add a special meeting for February 25th, 2014, and we can make that new business item 12I.
February 25th?
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven.
Did I say 25th? I'm sorry.
Ms. Bo.
Yeah, let's talk about time when we get to that point. Do we want to pin a specific date down, make sure it works?
Date and time.
Date and time, okay.
Five thirty on the twenty seventh?
Well, not five thirty. We're going to talk about the time.
It's an agenda.
It's going to be an agenda item.
Support? Support motion.
You need discussions, so you need a second. I'd just say if we could open the, leave the date open, maybe the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh, whatever commissioners have available.
Yeah, we're going to talk about it at the end of the deal.
Home favorite?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Support?
Home favorite?
I think, I think he means as amended.
That's what I said, as amended.
I thought that's what I heard you say.
He writes me down correctly. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining negotiations with sheriff supervisors.
Second?
Second.
Home favorite?
Aye.
We'll be right back.
All right, item number six, minutes of previous meetings, A through B.
Mr. Chairman, I moved that the minutes of the January 16th and the February 6th, the standing committee meetings be approved and filed.
Second? Home favorite?
Aye.
Item seven, proclamation, health department accreditation presentation.
Your nationals. Gentlemen, thank you. We have to represent Michigan Department of Community Health, Mark Miller, who is the local public health liaison. What is your official title? There you go.
All right, thank you, Dr. Merkentot. Yep, I'm Mark Miller. I'm the local health services director at the Public Health Administration from Michigan Department of Community Health. Thanks for inviting me today. I bring regards from our public health director, Melani Brim, and Jim Hademan, who is our director at the Department of Community Health. I'd like to acknowledge the board chair, Commissioner Bohm, and then also I see we have a board of health member here, Mr. Heidemann, so appreciate you guys inviting me. And especially I want to thank any of the staff we have that are from the St. Clair County Health Department and the health officer and medical director, Nat Merkentot, which is exceptional in the state because she is the only health officer that is also medical director. So you guys are sort of blessed with that distinction. We're here because we, it is our honor and pleasure to present a certificate of accreditation to all the staff at the health department and the board members here. The certificate represents a high level of achievement and is a credit to everyone involved in the accreditation process. The process that we had was in November of 2012 over at the health department. We reviewed 11 program areas with stellar results. Of the 151 essential indicators that were reviewed, the health department met all but two, two out of 151, for an initial compliance rating of 99%. This achievement is because of a dedicated health department administration and staff, but also because of continued support by the elected officials in St. Clair County. The, what I'll do now is I'll just give you a couple excerpts out of the report. I think the report was probably sent to Annette as well as to the commissioners. So some of you may have read it, but let me give you some of the highlights. The advanced preparation and thorough organization of materials for the onsite review was exemplary. All evidence used to prove that the health department met the indicators was organized and labeled appropriately in a binder. The county board of commissioners' decision to use insight will be tremendously beneficial to the health department, and the state commends the board of commissioners' decision to acquire this technology. We commend Dr. Merkentot and other staff in their processing of the imminent danger order targeting synthetic cannabinoids and synthetic cathenones a couple years ago. The health department's handling of the Wilms' tumor situation with limited resources was exemplary. The health department partners with a wide variety of agencies to provide a wide array of health services. In communicable disease, the health department sends out an excellent newsletter called The Blue Water Current, two to three times a year. If you haven't seen it, you should make that, Annette bring in some copies so you can take a look at it. It's a model for the state. The health department also receives special recognition for their immunization collaborative project and the presentation of the influenza update and also their vaccine replacement presentation. In hearing and vision, the accreditation manual that was presented was very thorough and well organized. Michelle Tammy, Vicki Rich, and Judy Roth, I don't know who they are, but I'm sorry they're not here, but they were, got high accolades in this report from our hearing reviewer. They said they are very conscientious technicians who understand the importance of early intervention with the preschool population. All these ladies are spectacular at their jobs. They work well with the school staff, parents, and children. They understand the importance of the impact they can make on the lives of the kids they serve. These ladies are doing a great job to ensure that the kids who need care are getting it. Then we had a couple of vision remarks, and the woman who does the review is Dr. Rachel Schuman, and she's usually, doesn't have too many accolades that she puts in the reports. So these next two comments are highly unusual. The hearing and vision team is clearly a frontrunner in Michigan for following policies and procedures, providing services, and ensuring that follow-up is received from providers and parents of those children who fail. It is refreshing to see this depth of preparation to ensure that the program runs smoothly and that there are no questions about the requirements of each person in their role. Usually I have to sort of dig to get positive comments out of this particular reviewer, but no, no problem for this county. Food service, which Greg used to run, the health department is congratulated for its excellent compliance rating. They had 90% plus for plan reviews, preopening evaluations, evaluation frequencies, temporary food evaluations, evaluation policy, enforcement policy, and foodborne illness investigations. Greg, I'm surprised you missed anything. Nice job. The organization and management of records is excellent. The health department is congratulated on this, on their exemplary records management. In onsite sewage, the health department illicit discharge elimination program collects and tests water samples from creeks, streams, rivers, road ditches, and drains countywide. The activities of this program have led, have led to numerous investigations resulting in identifying and correcting improper discharges from onsite sewage systems. So kudos on that. Also, the, the septic program had 100% compliance for planning. It said the location for this sewage system is clearly identified in the site plan drawing that is generated by staff. A lot of times when I see these reports in some of the other counties, it says that the plans are poorly drawn, and it's surprising that the health department could actually figure out where they're replacing the septic tank. So kudos to Greg and his team down there. For STD, the, the health department has developed an exceptionally detailed, well-organized and clearly written operations manual. They develop, maintain, and provide the leadership for the teen health center at the Port Huron High School. You've worked over there, right?
Yeah.
And they develop and maintain relationships with the local physician's healthcare network, and they've developed detailed descriptive processes and steps for diagnosis and treatment of HIV and STD. The, in immunization, St. Clair County Health Department is the only local agency that provides immunization services to international travelers. These individuals are given the vaccines that are needed and other important health education on the issues to be considered in the countries they are traveling to. The health department encourages adult immunizations and participates with the adult replacement programs offered by the vaccine manufacturers. It is commendable that all programs in the agency have immunization goals that coincide with the strategy of increasing immunization rates for all age groups. The medical director, Annette, is an immunization peer-to-peer educator, meaning she works to provide education to her peers around the state. So sort of MDCH is sort of taking advantage of your, your health officer, medical director's expertise. Pardon?
Pay us a little.
We do pay?
Yeah.
Oh, good. All right. In family planning, the health department staff provide absolutely excellent educational sessions. Family planning is another one. They usually check everything off, and there's not really a whole lot of accolades, but you guys had quite a few. The staff at the health department were extremely courteous when providing clinical and administrative services to Title X clients. Providing quality care is the main concern of the, the health department family planning staff. In children's special healthcare services, the accreditation reviewers would like to recognize the staff. They achieved a goal of contacting 100% of the clients' families, clients and families for initial enrollment and annual renewal. The, in WIC, WIC client agreements were signed with 100% accuracy. The program works closely with the outreach department to increase the awareness of WIC eligibility in the community. The WIC staff have done an excellent job of adopting client-centered care principles. And besides providing nutrition assistance to over 4,000 pregnant women, infants, and children, the program provides approximately 2.5 million to participating vendors in the community. So it's a good, it's a good economic partnership as well. So the health department provides high-quality public health programming despite the challenging economic times and the diminished workforce that most governmental entities are experiencing, and it's a testament to the professionalism of the staff. In addition to the programs reviewed, the health department is looking for ways to make the community healthier. With the release of the strategic plan last year, the health department is completing collaborations with community partners to respond to core issues and needs in the neighborhoods. You have a very, St. Clair County is kind of unique. I mean, you've got Canada across the river, you've got the river, you've got a three-hospital system, and you're kind of at the end of a, of two major freeways, and you're also perched on the, one of the greatest freshwater resources in the world. And so that gives your, your county many responsibilities. And your, this county is obviously committed to assessment, access, and policy development needed to make St. Clair County a prosperous and vigorous community, and contributes greatly to making St. Clair County a great place to work, live, and play. So in closing, I'd like to thank the folks from the health department and the board members, and especially the health officer, Merkentot, administrator Greg Brown, nursing supervisors Kathy Blado, Melanie Dunsmore, and Elizabeth King, and EH Director Steve Demick. We appreciate your continued collaboration and are very impressed with the efficient and innovative programs that are being delivered to the residents in, in St. Clair County. This health department provides excellent services. You, from the review, I mean, I look at all the reports, you guys are getting a great bang for your buck. You should appreciate the, the staff you have at the health department. I know that you do.
Thank you. I have nothing more to say.
Say anything there, Doc? Would you like to say anything or sum it up?
I don't think there's anything more I could say. Thank you very much for your attention as well.
Thank you. Then certificate. This is, also, by the way, this is the fifth time you've been accredited. This is our fifth cycle. We've done this since the late 90s. So, and you've been accredited every time, so congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I could put in two cents. I, I think how much more they could do if we had some additional funding, especially in terms of water quality, monitoring the quality of, of the drinking water. We've got, what, about 3 million people that depend on the water that flows by here for their drinking, all the way down to Detroit, so big item.
Okay, I'll pass those comments. I appreciate them. I'll pass them on to my colleagues at DEQ.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Proclamation B, recognizing Paul Tate. I actually gave that to Carl. Carl will be seeing him in the future. So I have a motion, a second.
Move to approve the proclamation recognizing Paul Tate, SEC Executive Director.
Support. Home favorite?
Aye.
Moving on, consent agendas.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items 7A through 7N on the consent agenda.
Support? Any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Bring them on, home favorite?
Aye.
Those opposed. On item number nine, courts standing in special committees, Mr. Greatham.
I'll take a pass tonight, sir. Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, thank you.
Steve?
No, I'm for it.
Carl?
I have nothing.
Howard?
I just have one item. Park and Rec met the other night, and as everyone, I think, is well aware, we have 2.5 acres at the end of the River Walk that we've acquired from Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund and Atchison Ventures. And the community foundation has given us 1.1 acres of riverfront there, so we now have access to the river, so we can move forward with that Fish and Wildlife Restoration Grant for river wetlands. In addition to that, we, we will be going for another Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant from Atchison Ventures to get another 2.5 acres there. And apparently, Atchison Ventures has approached us about that to expand the size of that park there. We'll be having a public hearing on that at the next Park and Rec meeting on the 12th of March.
Questions for Howard at all?
I have just one item I want to touch on regarding the, well, we met some time ago, and we talked about the solid waste plan amendments with Lapeer County. We've had all of our township folks we had met with, again, city folks, so on and so forth, still continuing to talk about the need for some additional trash. Originally with Lapeer County, we reached out to Lapeer. They said that they would have an interest in amending their plan. Lapeer County has no landfills located in their county, and the other part of it is a septic issue, too. We're still going to need to get more septic at our landfill. And they, amending these solid waste plans takes some time. They don't happen overnight. But I think after, with the recent meeting delivery of township, city, so on and so forth, they understand the issues, are very educated on it on our end, and I'd like to see us move forward with amending, starting the process to amend the solid waste plan with Lapeer County. As many of you know, we've talked to Macomb County previous on some stuff. That, that's going to take some time for it to play out there. There's no reason that we don't move forward with the Lapeer portion of it.
Steve?
Do you know where they currently export to, Jeff, in their solid waste plan?
I'm sorry?
Do you know where they currently export to? They must export to one of the-
Genesee and Oakland County has, they have a landfill over there. And I think the Richfield site is actually, the former Richfield site is actually closed. So they, they were, they were all about it when we had spoke with them before. Just, like I said, as you all know, those things take some time. They've got to be signed by 66% of the local communities, and just to get in front of everybody takes time. I did talk to Dave Struck a little bit today, and Jeff Donaldson's our point person on that. We do have a board that has been seated, and we did meet probably a year ago when we started the discussion, so. Anyone else on it? Bill, do you have anything you want to chime in about?
No, actually, I, related to that, I was speaking with the county, the Lapeer County Administrator about some other issues probably about a week ago, and he did bring up the amending the solid waste plan. They had every intention of moving forward with it last year, just had some other issues come up that got in the way of moving forward on this, but he has directed his staff to begin the process and try and move as quickly as possible.
Just one, I think this would be a big plus for both counties. So do we have a timeframe when this is going to move forward, potentially take effect?
It probably takes a year, you know, to get, get it done from start to finish, but I think on our end to have the board, solid waste board, which had met before, and actually get a recommendation from them to open up the plan, I think that's the process. We can have Jeff Donaldson actually at our next committee meeting come over, kind of talk us through the steps and everything and how it works, because I mean, I'm spotty at best on it, so.
Well, let's get it, get it on the table, and let's get it moving.
Okay. Citizens wishing to address the board. I've got Rob Usikowski, 6352 Ravenswood, Kimball, Michigan, St. Clair County, 4H Youth Fair. Hi, Rob.
All right, I'm Rob Usikowski. I'm the president of the St. Clair County Agricultural Society, also known as the Fair Board. So we use Goodell's County Park, and so I wanted to give you kind of an update of what we've got going on with, with that. We appreciate the park. The staff does a great job out there when we're out there. We work really well with the 4H program, which is also funded partially by the county through the MSUE, so we appreciate that funding as well. In 4H, they take youth, and they teach them about a project area. They have them set goals. They evaluate those goals. Those kids then turn around and teach other kids in those project areas. Where the fair comes in is there's no evaluative portion to the 4HP, so we offer them an opportunity to have their projects evaluated, both in terms of their individual progress as well as in terms of their, their placement in comparison to others. So great opportunity for us. In return, what we do is we give them rewards, so as part of that process. We have just over 900 kids that participate on a yearly basis in the St. Clair County 4H Fair. We give out probably about 10,000 different awards, whether they be ribbons, trophies. We give out $11,000 in premiums every year. Just want to give you an update on us financially. I know there's a lot of, a lot of rumors that go out there about us financially. Right now, we're solid financially. We bring in about $550,000 a year through that fair. Keep in mind, though, that of that $550,000, $250,000 is for our general expenses. That piece there has been declining by about 5% per year. So we're losing some of our revenue dollars, and we need to, to work to improve that. That other $300,000 that, that we bring in is from livestock sales. So kids raise a li, a piece of livestock, whether it be a sheep, a cow, whatever it is, they turn around and then they sell that at, at auction on Thursday. The money that they get from that auction helps them care, take care of the costs that they have associated with that project animal, which can be quite a bit depending on which kind of animal you're raising. So sometimes you get a little bit extra, so they can use that to purchase their next year's animal, or they can use it to fund college or whatever they want to do. Of those livestock sales, we keep 6% to help facilitate some of the other things that we need to do in administering that particular program. All in all, we're doing some things to kind of help us a little bit to increase admission. We're doing some additional advertising this year. We're going to have a musical act in the crater, so that's the, been out there, I don't know if it's technically called the crater, but it's that hill area. We're going to put a musical act in there, which we've never done before, so that's something new. We're also out actively looking for additional sponsorships to kind of offset some of the lost revenue that we've had. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer those.
Just one, your business plan, what kind of additional revenues you looking at? Do you have a five-year plan, or?
Right now, we don't have a plan, so I just took over, and that's one of the things that we're going to put into place, is a, is a plan for both advertising dollars, business dollars, the whole, the whole thing. Right now, we don't have that, so.
We run into you, Trevor. If you've got something to talk about next time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you're a long-time 4H guy. You want to chime in on anything?
Just that the fair has been in this county for as long as I've been in this county, and my kids get great benefit from it. I was in 4H at the time I was nine, and we've got five kids who have all gone through the 4H program, different fair boards, different facility expansion, so forth. It's a wonderful experience for the kids. You know, I always advocate that we support the fair board in what we do here. I know with Parks and Rec taking it over, that's a new dimension to how that gets managed out there, and it's an awesome facility, wonderful bunch of people.
Okay, Howard?
As a member of the Park and Rec Committee, I can, can't tell you how many times I've been told that St. Clair County has the best county fair in the whole state of Michigan. So it's outstanding job by those folks.
Haven?
Last two years, helping out there, bought three of the animals out there. The one took second place, and it's just great, great to have them meet and invitation to more commissioners to get out there and bid and get some of the pigs or, you know, support the communities. When I go out there, I'll circle down who, of course, is in my district, and I'll get something from somebody.
You, you mentioned pigs. Is that, because that's what you got?
Yeah, I got two pigs and a lamb.
Well, you know, we've always attended out there every year, visiting and, and really actually bought some beef out there over the years, and grand champions, my wife and I did. In the years that we've been there, I can see a tremendous difference from all through the years of how great the, from the buildings to the layout, to the, everything. It just gets better. And if you've ever attended any other ones in any other area, you'll see that your, Howard, what you said is right, I believe you said, is that it is one of the best, if not the best around.
Just one.
Yeah?
In case you haven't noticed, a few months ago, in addition to this board, the Park and Rec want to give them the thank you, Wales Township, that you'll have all three roads out there repaved and widened this year, so that's a big plus for everybody in the county.
Okay, I got my story. I bought a pig one year, and they sent me a picture of the pig. My kids wouldn't touch the food afterwards, so I gave that pig away.
That's why I ask if he was buying pigs. These stories are tasty.
Next person, Julie McRory, 3200 Armour Street, CMH Board of Directors.
Good evening. I wanted to-
I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself, my name's Julie McRory, I reside in District Two, which is Carl Tomian's district, and I've had the opportunity to speak with him a number of times regarding issues with community mental health. I understand, it came to my attention that a person, at-large person, resigned, and I know that it's a very complex situation with trying to cover all of the areas for people so that you have coverage from all districts. But I wanted to introduce myself because I have a unique background, it's very diverse in the fact that I have a special needs son. I also am the PTO President of Woodland Developmental Center. So my life involves many of the children out there, and many of the, the families, which are from K-Pac to Marine City and Elginak. I also care for a mentally ill nephew, and, and I have a four-year degree in business. So I feel that I'm a pretty good candidate for this slot, however, I know that based on the numbers per district, I may not get the slot. But I wanted you to put a face with the name when, when you come across, when you select people. I applied, sent my application to Carl earlier this year for a position that was open, but with your redistricting, the position went to someone in St. Clair, rather than to my district where the person left. And that was okay, but I'd like to see someone on the board that understands all of their jargon, and I know that not everyone can, but I've been enmeshed with community mental health, the whole system, for many years now because of my son, and feel that I'm a, would be a very viable candidate for that position. So don't forget, vote for me. No. I'm not, and, and that was another thing, I'm not a celebrity in this county, people don't really know me unless you have a developmental disabled child. I do a lot of advocating for families, and, and that's why I wanted to come here, so that you would know who I am. And also, I wanted to also speak on behalf of the four-H, I know this is not my place, but they've had a number of programs for the special needs children, and it has benefited them immensely, and I hope that they continue that for them, because they appreciate it. And that's all I have, if anyone has any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, item number eleven, unfinished business, no unfinished business coming for us, item number twelve A, approval of county dispersments.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for January two thousand fourteen in the amount of twelve million eight hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents.
Support? Discussion, roll call. Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number B, the Veteran Affairs Board Appointment.
Chairman? I'm, I am your liaison with the Veterans Affairs Board, and I'd like to move this evening that we remove the position representing World War II era veteran representative, and replace it with a position representing the Vietnam era, and also appoint Dan Lane, our former sheriff, to said position for the remainder of a four-year term, which would expire December thirty-first of this year.
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number C, the two thousand thirteen inter-local agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the two thousand thirteen inter-local agreement with Macomb County for the Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Support? Discussion, just a grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number C, the two thousand thirteen Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agreement of the two thousand thirteen Operation Stone Garden Grant Agreement, amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars.
Support? Discussion, just a grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number E, the copier replacement contract, Kurt Albert.
At this time, I'd like to move to award the copier replacement contract to Kurt Albert in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Support? Discussion, roll call. Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number F, Manning Table Changes.
At this time, I would move to approve provisions to the Manning Table in the Administrator Controller's Office as presented.
Support? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number H, the Resolution fourteen dash zero-one Collective Bargain Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to adopt Resolution fourteen dash zero-one ratifying the collective bargain agreement with the St. Clair County Sheriff's Department Supervisors, COAM Group.
Support? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number I, that's picking the date or time for the twenty-seventh there, Howard, special meeting, tentatively for the S and G-
Right.
Contract, as Commissioner Rushing had made a request, if we could do something around noonish on that day, I don't know if that works for you guys.
What date, now the twenty-seventh?
Number twenty-seven, Thursday.
Twenty-seventh. February twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Yes. What time?
Around noon.
That's fine.
Does that work?
I have other plans, so if it's in the afternoon, I cannot make the meeting.
I have three cases in Detroit, the start at one o'clock, one-thirty, and two o'clock downtown Detroit, takes me an hour and fifteen minutes to get there, so I'll be bugging out of here about eleven-thirty.
Uh, do we want to do something sooner?
Ten AM, earlier, the better for me, ten AM.
Early, I could, eight o'clock in the morning's fine with me.
Hold on.
I already thought you were-
I meant to say ten o'clock in the morning's-
What about like eleven o'clock? This is literally a half an hour long deal, it's probably not even that.
It works.
If we did eleven o'clock, we could, okay?
Eleven o'clock works for me.
I think we should all vote Jeff and make it eight, myself, but.
Most of us are retired, buddy.
So, that, I'll move to schedule a special Board of Commissioners meeting on February twenty-seventh at eleven AM.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item thirteen, Administrator's Report.
I'm going to do something a little different, I have to move over to the podium for this.
Yeah. I have to give them like a proclamation or something. Is that the heated?
The, I just want to remind the board that the legislative lunch is scheduled for next Monday, there was an agenda that went out this afternoon, so it's Monday at noon, and if you could let either Carrie or myself know before you leave tonight whether or not you will be able to attend, or feel free to send a note to Ms. Morris that you're attending as well. The two thousand fifteen budget, Carrie has begun working on developing an outlook on where we expect to be in two thousand fifteen. And I know she's spent a lot of time working on wage sheets, which is all the information related to employee costs, and we spent a little bit of time today talking about where we think we might be, big picture stuff, and how we might interact with some of the department heads this year, and we'll be sharing more information with you as we further develop that. But just to let you know, work has begun on that, and we'll be back in touch with you as well as the department heads.
Bill, I want to just chime in quick, Bill and I were with the Lieutenant Governor earlier today for a meeting over here, and one of the things that they brought up was revenue sharing, and I know it's on our legislative luncheon, but it's one of the things that is part of the governor's agendas, to restore some level of revenue sharing, so.
And we would certainly appreciate that. You should have received in your email boxes, I think sometime last week, a summary of the most recent Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I'd urge you to take a few minutes when you receive those and look those over, it's a great way of sharing information on what's going on with Parks and Rec. Real quick read, but it certainly keeps you in touch with everything that they're up to, so. Novus Board View, we've talked to you in the past about trying to make some changes to the Novus system, so all of you that have iPads, or would care to start accessing Novus in your board agendas electronically, making notes before the meetings, and being able to refer to those notes. It does now work, Chris has been testing it, using myself as a guinea pig, and over the last couple of days, we've worked out all of the bugs. I do know that Commissioner Graytop began using it yesterday, or sometime today, perhaps.
And the only bug I found in it today, Bill, was that all of the annotations that I made and saved, when I reopened it, they were gone. We've got a, if I didn't save it right, or there's still a bug in there, we'll have to figure that out.
Okay. So there will, you can expect to get an email with an electronic, let's say cheat sheet that shows you, shows you how to use the system, but we'll also be scheduling training sessions for all of you, so watch for an email from Chris Morris on that. The rest of the presentation, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the Convention Center and what's going on with that, there's been a lot of discussion lately that I've been hearing on the street, a lot of rumors flying around, and it's probably a good time to spend a little bit more time than usual talking about it. All of you probably received a press, a copy of a press release that went out yesterday. One of the things that we'll be doing over the summer is being a little bit more aggressive with getting information out to the local media. You will be copied on all those press releases, we'll also be loading those press releases up to the county's website, the project website, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, and hopefully, good information will get out there, accurate information will get out there, and it will help to dispel some rumors that might be flying around. One of the things that, that was mentioned in the press release was the fact that there is a rebid notice out for some of the Convention Center, the new construction portion of the Convention Center. As I've reported to you before, some of the scopes of work, we either did not receive any bids for, or we didn't receive what we felt were competitive bids. That could very well be because we only received one bid on that. As you may recall, in two thousand thirteen, in, I think it was May of two thousand thirteen, we bid the ballroom work, and we received absolutely zero bids for that work. So we had to go back and rebid it, the entire project. When we went out and rebid it, we got quite a few bids on that project, a lot of interest in it, and I'll show you some photos of the finished work in a few moments, but most of that work is completed. The areas of the new build that we are rebidding, and, and I'll announce them there, because it wasn't, that kind of detail was not included in the press release, and I have been getting calls today from contractors wondering, what about my trade, what are you doing there? So the areas that we are rebiding, bidding are demolition, masonry, woods, plastics, and composites, caulking and sealants, overhead doors, and if you're interested, I can send this list to you tomorrow. Painting, accessories, which is primarily materials, folding, panel partitions, wall protection, meaning wall and corner guards, miscellaneous equipment, plumbing, HVAC, and communications. So, the biggies, the time-consuming items that need a lot of lead time. Right now, is steel, structural steel, and the pre-cast concrete. We do expect to be coming to the board very shortly on awarding contracts for both of those projects. We've made some final decisions on that, and we'll begin working with Corporation Council on developing the contracts that are necessary to present to you, as well as to the bidders, and hopefully, we can execute those very shortly. What will be next will be the earthwork, which is moving dirt around, digging out the foundations, leveling the site, preparing for the concrete work, which will consist of the foundations, and the floors, and the location. So that will be coming next, that will be the next phase of contracts that come to you after you see the pre-cast and the steel, the structural steel. The county does have a website for this project, it was actually created last year, and if you go on the homepage for the county, on the left-hand side, you will see something called SCC Projects. We intend to put any number of projects that may be coming up. Right now, the only project that is listed there, there is the Convention Center. Many of the reports that are delivered to the Board of Commissioners, some of the contracts, I think all of the contracts so far that have been executed for the project are located there as well. Some of the estimates that were done, the work that was done by CSL, the market study that was done with some of the original pro formas are out there as well. Some of the information regarding the bonding of the project, I believe, is located on the website also. There's an area that we also use for the bid documents, as of about five o'clock, those items, the rebid notices that went out last night, have not been loaded up to that site yet, but they should be there certainly by noon tomorrow. There's also a gallery of photos that we intend to include, some of the photos that you see today will be the first set of photos that will be posted there, and the intent is to provide the viewers of the website an opportunity to actually see what's going onsite, and watch the progress for the development of the facility. So if you have any questions about the website, if there's information you'd like to see there, please let us know, and we will see that it gets uploaded to the site. And if I didn't indicate early, all the press releases that we'll be sending on the project will be loaded up to the site as well. The, every week, we have someone that goes out to the site and takes photos for us, and let's see, this is a different format than what I have on my computer, so I'm not going to be able to show you just the slideshow, because I'm not sure where to go on this format. Oh, here we go. So, this gives you an idea of the lobby that has been completed, obviously, the decorations aren't there, we're beginning to talk about, what are we going to do on the halls to kind of dress the place up, it looks pretty bare right now, but if you go up there, and if you want to access either the ballroom, or you want to access the restaurant, there is a separate entrance now that you can be using. So the carpet is in, the doorways are in, and all of, you may remember, there were bathrooms there that serviced the ballroom, those bathrooms have been removed, the electrical rooms have been removed, and this now is the lobby for that area. This is just another shot of the lobby area, and you can see the entrance to the freighters. The carpet that you see there is the same as what you see in the, in the ballroom itself. This is the hall room, the hallway in front of the ballroom, it's been completed. The bathrooms, the new bathrooms that have been constructed are on the right, the ballroom is on the left. The ballroom is on the left. This is a before picture of the ballroom when they started some of the demolition work, removing the carpet and the flooring that was in there. This is before they did any work to the ceiling and to the, this is the ballroom as it looks today, and this happens to be set up at this point for a wedding that was held there last weekend. This is what most people see as the final product, and there's still some finishing touches we need to make on it, some window coverings and stuff, but you can see it's a vast improvement over what was there before. So, we're not complete. I will be coming to you at the Administrator's Report each month, sharing just a couple of photos with you. They'll be out on the website, so if you have any citizens that are asking what's going on, what kind of progress has been made, I hear nothing's happening, direct them to the website, and you can certainly share with them what has been occurring. One of the concerns that I've been hearing about the Convention Center, and it relates to some of the rumors, is that the project is over budget, the Board of Commissioners is trying to figure out what to do, they've got themselves in a big PR mess, and the reason we don't see anything going on up there is because they do not handle the cost overruns. Well, I can tell you, and I've told you every time I've met with you, the project is not over budget. As you know, we have been progressing on this project in a very, very deliberate fashion. We bring in experts to advise us on this. We realize we're using taxpayers' dollars, and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to minimize the risk on the success of this facility, and as a result, before we make moves, we make sure that we've done the right things. Those of you that have talked with Mr. Kruger recently, who is one of the consultants we've hired, you may recall that he advised you that we are making all the right moves, we're doing the right things, and he expects that we will have a best-in-practice example to share with a lot of communities and how we've moved forward with this. So, we are moving slowly for a very deliberate reason. Before we make a decision that commits us in one direction or another, we want to make sure we've made the right decision. The reason we went out to rebid and the reason we've taken the time we have to make awards on some of the contracts is that we want to make sure that we've got everything covered. We don't want to have any surprises down the road. We want to make sure that the contractor fully understands what we expect of them, and we want to make sure as well that we understand what the contractor is and is not capable of delivering. Again, to minimize risk and minimize surprises down the road. So, the project is moving forward. The delays are very deliberate. The project, as I've said before, the project will be finished and open when it's finished and when it's done correctly. So, if you get comments or questions from your constituents about what's going on and why is it taking so long, you can certainly share with them what I've shared with you today, or you can have them give me a call or send me an email, and I'd be more than happy to speak with them and let them know where we are at. So, again, the project is not over budget. We have not put the project on hold. It is moving forward. We are just taking our time to make sure we're doing everything correctly. So, with that said...
Questions for Bill regarding the Administrator's Report?
I have a question. Has the, has the weather affected it at all, Bill?
Certainly, the weather is going to affect us as we move forward. You know, we've got, right now, we estimate, we probably have about four feet of frost in the ground. They were up there maybe about two weeks ago trying to put some additional lamp posts in the ground. Had to come up with some jackhammers to get through all the frost to put the foundations down for the lamp posts, and it took them a great deal of time. So, we expect that the earthwork or digging the foundations will be delayed until the frost is out of the ground. We did look at what would it take to thaw the ground out? The contractors are capable of doing that, but that drives the price of the project up considerably. Once those foundations are in a cure, we can start putting the walls up in the structural steel. So, because there is a delay, we've had a very, very severe winter, a lot of frost in the ground, the construction will be delayed somewhat, but our project partners are very well aware of when we expect to begin.
Another, Howard?
How serious is that in light of the fact that it's probably going to take, I might be conservative, probably six to 12 weeks to get the precast walls and the steel made?
Well, first of all, we think that by the time the weight limits are off the roads, we'll be able to start moving that material in. One of our concerns in meeting with the contractors about moving that precast material and the structural steel to the site is when will there be weight limits in place for our roads? As you know, the date at which you can move heavy equipment around on certain roads in the county fluctuates every year. We don't know when it's going to happen. It's very weather-dependent. We have a general idea of what the window would be, so we were already going to be delayed somewhat because that window happened to fall right in the middle of the delivery date, the expected delivery date for that heavy equipment. So, we think right now what will happen is that material will be on-site once we have the concrete cured for the foundation up there, the earthwork done, and then, once that's ready, then the heavy equipment will start showing up on-site to lift those walls and put the steel up. So, I don't, I don't think it's going to delay us considerably. Our partners know that we've still got a date we're shooting for, a target date to get that big event room filled in, because they certainly don't want a lot of dust and a lot of noise during the summer season when they may have weddings outside on the patio. They don't want all that dust flying around. They certainly don't want a lot of outside pounding going on when they've got guests in the hotel. So, we're working with them to ensure we're going to have that work done soon enough.
David?
Just one. It's an obvious question. If I don't ask it, somebody will. We looking for a completion date at the Convention Center in 2014?
2015, we are looking for a completion date, and I certainly don't want to try and guess what they did.
I don't want to zero it down, but just so.
We're looking at, certainly, we're looking at the first half of 2015, so that gives us plenty of cushion.
Steve?
I have a question, but I'd like to comment if I could, Joe.
Yeah.
I was in the courthouse a month ago, and a local professional person had asked me a question about the Convention Center, and as commissioners, we certainly see how much time the commission puts into this project and how much time the administration has put into this project and everyone else has put into the project. But this fellow says to me, he asked me a question, he says, you know, "Is the county still building a Convention Center?" So, it just told me that there's a big part of the public that doesn't realize what's going on or how it's going on, so I think your information campaign will be helpful. And I don't know how to get the people involved to see how it's progressing, but I was surprised that a person, you know, would not know that the county is involved with this project, given all the media attention and all the interest in it, you know, for the last year and a half, but that's out there, that's all. I noted that was interesting.
Well, and we, and we try at the department head meetings, which we hold once a month, to give everyone an update on where we're at, hoping that the department heads will go back to their respective departments and share some of that information as well. Doesn't always occur.
Anything else, Bill? Okay. Motion for the Administrator's Report?
I would so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Miscellaneous business. Got a question for Mr. Greatop. What's the time on the presentation with the Canadian deal on the 26th?
10:00.
10:00.
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. And it is going to be...
Well, we're thinking about moving it up here because we're going to tape it.
Okay. All right, anything else? Receive and file?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we receive and file the packets that were sent to the Commissioners and the packets that were at our offices, and any other information that was presented at the meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman?
Motion. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.